Article being ordered, let's stand for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge a pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which we stand, on this, under God, indivisible, created in the first place. Let's pause for a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda for seating? We have motion, Ms. Myers, or second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Grove. All in favor, aye? Aye. Post no. It's ordered. Dr. Grisley.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. The first item is going to be the budget report. I'll pull that up now. I'm sorry, I'm running Zoom too, so I'm just, if I get distracted, that's fine, I'm just making sure people can get it. So, the superintendent's report, as we understand the construct of the budget at this point in time. Of course, at this point in time, everything is conjecture and our best guess estimates of what we have, but we do set priorities on the framework on which we will build the budget. So, the current status of our budget right now, we have realized some savings in unfilled positions or combined positions. And also, part of that is using ESER money really creatively to provide temporary intervention type positions that, you know, based on our trend data with attrition, that we can then absorb into the budget later as people leave and go with it if the need still isn't there. If the need is still there and it's working, then of course, we find ways to build those things into the budget. Our actual ADM did drop due to COVID, but not so much. Our annual school report number was close in the 760s, so not too bad. So, that's going to help us there. Analyzed facilities needs based on our capital improvement and additional funds coming through, not only through the American Rescue Plan, but also through the infrastructure and modernization line. We were able to get more done on that and move forward. And also, if you remember, in this year's budget, we did away with the Pago account with the county, saving the county quite a lot of money in the projected future. Based on that money, we intend to continue to receive at a baseline of $200,000 a year in infrastructure and modernization. The current budget, governor's budget, does have an additional $1 million for Rappahanna County in there for capital improvements. So, that's pretty awesome. And that's, I imagine that's part of the infrastructure package, but we're not sure exactly how that's coming through yet, but that's where it stands now. Lots of grants received this year, Wellness Center, Commit to Be Fit, Teacher Wellness Grant, the Safety Grant, so we'll continue to write those grants and go after whatever we can to do what we need for our students. We still have SR2 funds remaining for the year. We're not quite through half of our SR2 funds at this point, but we do fully intend to spend that out by the end of this fiscal year and perhaps even need to dip into SR3 a little bit. So, we'll see on that. We are receiving additional state sales tax revenue for this year, so that's already matriculating in through our books. So, current status is really good in our budget at this point. Factors affecting this year's budget, still attrition and laps and turnover will depend on how much you have left as your vacancies continue. Our actual health insurance rates that come in as we build the budget, the TLC was 4% overall pool increase when we last checked, but we won't know that for a while yet. But, this year's budget was built on, again, not a no gain in the insurance premium, we do anticipate seeing that coming up this year.
TLC?
Oh, sorry, the local choice.
Local choice.
Yeah. Of course, projected ADM versus actual, always a factor, and the March 31st number for average daily membership will be used to calculate those revenues. And then, your actual state and federal revenues, we don't really know until August, September, and then we do some reconciliation there. Additional grants that we may receive, we're still waiting to hear on a big one, we should hear about this month if we get the state set aside grant, and that was upwards of almost half a million dollars we applied for, so still waiting to hear on that. And of course, end of year payouts with your retirees and resignations and such, we won't know that yet. Intent forms did go out last week, so we'll be collecting those and compiling all that data by the end of the month. Compensation impacts, the governor's proposed budget at this point in time, the, this is Governor Northam's budget he proposed, governor advocating for 10% increase over the next two years for SOQ positions. So, that would probably look like a 5% in each year of the biennium, and that's what our compensation adjustment in the revenue package looks like right now. Health insurance, again, we don't know what that's going to be, but we do anticipate an increase. We're using 8% as a placeholder, just to be safe. And then VRS, even though the overall VRS realized a savings of about 2% or so, they're going to remain stable on the 16.62 and not give that back. So, I'm sure that's what they're using to fund some of the other areas of the budget. We remain committed to these FY23 priorities as we've been planning for a few years now, so support comprehensive planning goals, has they become apparent? That comprehensive planning is going on right now with a goal of having the completed plan for public comment by May for adoption in June. It'll be here before we know it, so that'll be an interesting document, especially with so much that's changed since our last planning comprehensive plan. Amelioration of COVID impacts, that's going to continue to be at the top of the list because there are quite a few impacts that we're dealing with and will be for probably the next five years or so. Teacher staff compensation remain at the top of the list, but we want to retain what we're doing with profile of a graduate and really enhance those high school academies, continue with the agriculture, health sciences, and hopefully establish a Fine Arts Academy, which has been one that we've been, had our eyes set on for quite a while. And then, of course, capital improvements. We sent out a budget survey to the community and parents and staff were able to, and students were able to take that survey. This is the breakdown, so mostly parents, and then a pretty even breakdown between teachers, staff, and community members, and a little bit the smaller sections of the pie are your administrators and then students.
How many people responded?
Oh, I want to say it was 170-something people. Is that about right? 171, yay, okay, that was close.
Pretty accurate.
Thank you, Ollie. So, the survey said that the top five priorities of those who responded, teacher staff salaries were number one, which it has been actually, I think, the last five times we've done this survey. Number two was small class sizes, and that moved up this year. So, I think maybe just people seeing the impact of having smaller class sizes, especially since COVID, they're seeing some of the benefits to that, especially right now. Teacher staff benefits were number three, career and technical education, number four, and field trips, number five. The number four and five were different in the top five this year, so it's neat how priorities change. It was neat, though, in the comments section, one of the students had responded that they love the school and it's looking really good and they like to, they have a lot of pride, they're an athlete, and it doesn't tell me who said this, but it's obviously a high school athlete. But they said, "Could you please do something about our locker rooms, because when the other teams come, they see our beautiful school, then they go into the locker rooms and they say, 'Ooh, it doesn't look so great.'" And it is on our capital improvement plan, it just takes a little time to check off everything, but that's good from the student standpoint to let them know that that's coming, so good feedback.
I'm sorry, do you have any breakdown in terms of percentages of these, one through five?
They're one through five, the, I do have them, I can send those to you, but yeah, they were all really close.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they were all really close, but they were obvious, the top three were a little bit further ahead, but number four and five, very, very close. So, legislation, there's over 200 bills affecting education budgets right now, but one to watch, since we're talking so much about capital improvement and school modernization, is the Stanley bill right now. And this says that school boards, any unexpended local funds can be, at the end of any fiscal year, has to be reallocated back for capital projects, which we can always ask the supervisors to do that, but this would sort of guarantee that whatever's left can be put into a capital fund. So, just watching that, that's where this came from, the Commission on School Construction and Modernization, it did pass out of the Public Ed Subcommittee and no opposition, so the full Senate Education Health Committee next Thursday will hear that. But that one, I thought, was really interesting because that would have an immediate impact. There are a lot of other ones that I'm not sure will make it out of either one of the other committees that would have budget impacts, but this one would probably have the most immediate, largest effect on our budget. The support cap has been talked about quite a lot, and it's getting some push. Now, there's not a bill to address this, but this would be in a budget code language. Support cap is something that VAS, the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, has been advocating that the state changes, because it doesn't base the amount you receive on the standards of quality to help your support positions, even though SOQ may require them. So, it only covers a fraction of the prevailing cost of what you would have for your support staff, even though you still have to have so many support staff. So, if you look at this graph, since 2010, Rappahanna County has lost $770,000 because they don't use the prevailing costs on required support positions. So, if they were to remove the support cap, that would be an area that we would see an increase. But the hard thing, I advocated for this in our last meeting with VAS, was you keep saying about how great this is to remove the support cap, but I haven't seen figures, you know? I mean, any legislator, it might be a nonstarter, if it's this much for Rappahannock, imagine when you add in 131 other districts and then go to the legislature, if it's too big of a pie to take off, you know, that's just going to be a nonstarter. So, they did hire a group to put together all the figures and things to start advocating that way, and I really doubt anything will be retroactively put in, looking at these numbers, I don't think that's going to be really possible, but it might be a way forward where everybody will get a little bit more toward their required support positions. So, just be aware when you hear that, you will hear it in legislative meetings and things about the support cap, so a lot of attention being put there. Here are your 2022 session committees, so all the names are there on each of the committees, so anytime I write letters for anything we're advocating for, these are the people that I'm going to go after. And then, of course, our School Innovative Finance Task Force team will be giving a full report to the Joint School Board and Board of Supervisors with some other ideas and suggestions and recommendations for helping to support the school budget and finding other ways to advocate for maximizing what we can receive from different revenue streams. So, that's where we are at this point, but this is a work session for you all to let us know what your priorities would be and direct staff on what you would like us to put together for a draft budget.
Early.
It is very early, and things will change.
Yeah, and you know, our board is planning a retreat on the 29th to discuss comprehensive plan goals, which would obviously have an impact on the budget and hopefully our year one, next year's goals as well, right? So, I don't know if there were questions when we were going through the briefing, anybody has any questions so far? For stand, anybody?
Not sure I have a question, I have a couple, just very minor requests, let's put it that way, if we're talking that way. I'd like to make sure that we maintain our slots on Mountain Vista Governor Schools within the budget, whether we have the kids or not, but it should be earmarked in the budget. And this is a kind of off-the-wall thought, but I've been going to basketball games, going to football games, and seeing many, many parents of kids who are playing shelling out five bucks a shot every time they go see a game. And I'd love to give one pass per athlete so that at least one parent can come and not shell out their five bucks every time they go to a game. When my kids were playing, I never missed a game, but I'd never, I always missed the eight bucks I had to pay to go to. So, if it's a way to put that in the budget to compensate the athletic department somewhere or other, I'd love to see that happen. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Yeah, I understand.
We can look at it, and part of our athletic savings too, and we can look at our athletics budget too and look at if there's any areas of savings and talk to our athletic director about, you know, possibly.
Well, I'm sure she has a budget she has to work with, but I'm sure the gate receipts add to that budget for lots and lots of different things.
They do.
Yeah. And I don't have any way of calculating how much that would cost, because you don't know which passes would be used or not used, and it could be, it could be an increase. If I have a pass, I can bring my wife and my other kid or something of that nature and spend the same 10 bucks.
Neat idea.
Thank you, Larry.
I had a comment also regarding athletics and other events, just wondering if we have, when was the last time that compensation for coaches was increased? I know we've talked about increasing, you know, teacher pay, and I'm wondering about coach stipends, or if there's a, you know, provision for when you get into the extended season of, you know, some coaches, you know, they go into playoffs and they're working a month or two longer, and it's exciting and it's a reward in of itself, but there could be, there's a lot of hours and sometimes lost work hours that people put in, and curious to understand how we compare to other counties and just if we're being fair to our coaches all across, you know, from Quiz Bowl to drama to everything.
Absolutely, yeah.
I don't think we've ever raised a.
Yeah, I don't recall ever shooting that rate.
In my eight years, I don't think.
We did a few years ago, didn't we? Didn't we up the stipends?
There were a few that we did.
We added some stipends.
Not across.
We added more to it, yeah.
We certainly.
I think we added sort of support.
Added some assistant coaches.
Assistant coaches and stuff.
I thought we pumped it up.
Yeah, a few years ago.
Rachel's point, though, about the extended season has always been valid, you know, we have never, I don't think, done anything for an extended season, you know, any kind of like extended, or bonus for extended season or something to help compensate.
So, hopefully we can produce a winning team.
That's definitely a good point.
I just said, I'd like to understand where we fly, you know, I'm not angry, I just am curious and want to be fair.
Can we see how we compare to Madison and Page and similar sizes?
Yeah, we do want to keep all our salaries as competitive as possible, and that goes for our coaches who do put in so many hours. We have outstanding teams and outstanding coaches, so yeah, we will definitely pull those comparisons and look at that.
And then, the other area that I have received comments on is just concern over with, you know, we don't have our school social worker now, and I know we're working hard to refill that position, but wondering if we need, if the future social worker would need more support in any way, maybe a bigger team, I really don't know if, I've heard that there are a lot of work put on our behavior interventionist, if that's, if we weren't more than one interventionist, I would like to understand that as well, just so we can have the support for that vital mental health piece in our budget.
Anything else there? I had a couple of things. I do want to say, you know, I'm in favor of this 10% over two years. First of all, all our neighbors are going to be doing the same thing, whether it's, we're told by Richmond or not, I think some of them have already talked about it, so it's definitely something that I would advocate, but I want to make sure the people understand. When Richmond says to us, 5% increase per year for two years, when they say 5% to Rappahannock County, right, that translates to half a million dollars additional on our bottom line, and it also translates into, we're only going to get about 75K from Richmond, the rest of it comes from Rappahannock County, right? So, it's great to applaud, you know, Richmond making great choices, I just wanted you to know that the buck stops for us because of our multiple, our LCI, it's going to be a huge impact to the local for two years. So, we're talking about 850K over a two-year period when Richmond says, you know, give 10%. I just want to make sure we're clear about what's happening there. The other thing I wanted to say was, I saw your discussion about the academies, and I know that they, the students are really favor the academies, and I believe that there's a lot of room for Fine Arts Academy that would be very popular. And so, between the Health Science Academy and the AG and the Fine Arts, here's what I see, because I'm in favor of these things, but I see a landscape where in the coming years, parents from I don't know where are going to have choices about the education of their children, and I would like them to choose to send them here, right? And the more types of things like this that we offer, that these students are graduating credentialed and they've been able to focus in an area that they're interested in, the way these academies provide, is going to be a great value. So, I definitely want to make sure that you're aware that this board member is very in favor of supporting the new academy idea and the expansion of existing academy feature, the features that we add to them. Especially, you know, we've had discussions too about like how to expand the AG Academy and how well it fits into the culture of our county and the needs that are in the county. So, there's a lot of things that we can do here that I think would be very popular and attractive to people that are making choices of education. Hey, so for now, it says you're estimating an 8% increase in our health, just so that we don't get shocked if something finally shows up after, what, five years? How many years, seven?
We're on our sixth year with no.
Sixth year, no increase.
And the last two, it was a decrease.
Right. So, you just put that in there to try to keep us from going into shock later, right?
Precisely.
It's a year for health, isn't it, this year?
Yeah, it seems like.
I don't know, I guess we're all looking over our shoulder. Any other, any other questions or comments? When you said, on the first page, you said there are SR2 funds that are remaining that we will spend before June 30th, right?
Yeah.
Could you have any idea of the magnitude of, like, is it half a million dollars? Is it, what is it, do you know?
For what we're going to.
What we have to expend between now and June?
I guess it's, what do we have now? We still have another 270 or so thousand out of SR2, but we anticipate using that for some of the extras that we put into, for interventions and stuff, things for students.
Okay.
Anything else?
Anybody? Anything else?
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item. Let's talk about executive order number two. So, I thought what I would do with this one, because I know it can tend to get a little controversial and people have very strong feelings and things, so I'm going to sort of take off my superintendent hat and take off my parent hat, and they are sometimes at odds with one another, you should see those interactions, they're kind of funny. And then, just to put on my adjunct school law professor hat and kind of walk through where we've been legally, kind of what's happened to us, again, from Richmond throwing us another curveball, we love those, and then sort of where we stand at the end. So, I just respectfully ask the board, can I go through the whole thing first, just to present all of the pieces for you to consider, and then I'll make a recommendation where I see that we stand legally, based on all the information I have today, right now at 6:54 PM on Thursday. And yes, things can change, between now and Monday when this order takes effect, things may change, so I'll talk about all of that, so just give me a moment. I'll pull this out.
We don't have this, right?
It's not loaded on board docs yet. I was sort of anticipating a little bit more information, maybe even up to the hour before, so I'm sorry it's not loaded yet. It will be after this meeting for everybody. Let me hide my controls here.
Can you see?
Yeah, I can. All right. So, first, I thought we would just walk through the, this year's, this school year, the masking guidance that we've dealt with and some of the legal implications that we've seen throughout, since we started school this year. So, if you remember Senate Bill 1303, or what it is now is the General Assembly, Chapter 456, was signed and put in place on March 30th, 2021, and this was the bill, if you remember, required schools to offer in-person instruction five days per week following CDC guidelines to the maximum extent practicable. And there was a lot of ambiguity, not at first, I mean, it was, it seemed to be pretty clear, the main push on that bill at the time and all the guidance we received was you need to open, because there were a lot of schools going virtual, and the push was to get schools to open in-person five days a week. July came and things were looking great, so they ended the Virginia Public Health Emergency Order, it expired, the executive order restrictions were lifted in Executive Order 79. August 4th, the RCPS School Board voted to remove, move forward with a mask optional policy using data-driven dynamic metrics, decision-making metrics to decide when to escalate and de-escalate mitigation procedures, but basically started the year off normal as a normal year with really not too much in place. Kids were still switching classes, they were in the lunchroom, they had everything as normal. August 5th, Governor Northam reinterpreted Senate Bill 1303 and said basically that the CDC guidelines are requirements for in-person learning. So, that was a reinterpretation of the bill from the governor's level office, there was still some ambiguity with what that meant, what was practicable, and it was still interpreted as school districts still as a locality had some flexibility in what they did with mitigation. So, to clear that up, the State Health Commissioner the following week issued, Norman Oliver issued a public health order, and that was a requirement in K-12 settings that everyone must wear masks regardless of vaccination status. And if you recall, that was just a couple days, that was the week we started school, everything was kind of up in arms for a little bit there. August 13th, so right away, we got that order, okay, the Health Commissioner's order, and we said, okay, we stepped back from the policy we had decided on, and we issued guidance that we must follow all federal and state health orders and therefore will now require masks in schools regardless of vaccination status in accordance with the Commissioner's health order. And that notice went out to everybody, and immediately it went into effect based on the state health order. There were some certain exemptions that could be applied in that order with medical exemptions, religious, but those were still kind of loosely tied, and in virtual instruction or remote learning was still an acceptable alternative when community transmission, school transmissions high. And that's why we could still say, well, at this point, our transmission's at a higher level, so right now, distance learning for those with exemptions are acceptable. So, that's where we were then. So, executive actions versus generally, general assembly actions, so this is what everyone's sort of scrambling with, and we've had a week to try to get our heads all around this, so that's why you're seeing school districts kind of saying different things, consulting attorneys, we're looking at, and there will be challenges. No matter what anybody does, there's going to be legal challenges with this either way. So, any governor in Virginia cannot issue an executive order that contradicts an action of the General Assembly. So, that's the biggie that people are sort of questioning, does this in effect contradict Senate Bill 1303 or Chapter 456? In particular, it's that line that says you must adhere to the maximum extent practicable any current mitigation strategies for which CDC puts out. So, that's the critical piece that people are wondering. So, just this week, Senator Donovan, who helped patron this bill, put out a statement that said Senate Bill 1303 does not mandate the use of masks in school because the CDC does not mandate them, they recommend them. They do mandate them on public transit, you know, you have to wear them on a school bus still, that didn't change with this executive order, but it's not a mandate, they're still saying it's a recommendation and reiterating that that bill was more about getting in-person instruction, and what is practicable to school divisions is really subjective and up to the community to decide. And what is practicable to school divisions is really subjective and up to the community to decide. So to complicate things further, C D C updated their guidance this week. As of yesterday, it went up that cloth masks, which the majority of our students are wearing, won't be enough to stop Omicron variant. And in fact, Dr. Green said this to us before he got whisked off to Richmond to be our new health commissioner. And he said with everything he's seeing with the Omicron variant, the cloth masks that the majority of kids are wearing won't do anything. And C D C is updating their guidance. As of yesterday, they put out that the N ninety-five or well-fitted respirator masks are the best, will offer the best protection. This graphic kind of shows you the protection that you would get should everyone be wearing N ninety-fives in school, which would give us the most protection. But again, if we mandate, follow that, then it would go to, you would probably have to provide those for those who you mandated for, like we do with other things. So if you were to do that, the cost, would it be cost prohibitive? You could use S R funds, but again, that's upwards of the cost of a bus for the rest of the year. For whom would you do that? It's just considerations. So those are the guidelines that have changed. So you do, and those offer the best protection. So that's good for people to know that. So Virginia Supreme Court, here's why things could change. And there, like I said, there will be legal challenges. January eighteenth, just a couple of days ago, a petition was filed by some Chesapeake parents to challenge Governor Youngkin's executive order number two on two grounds of violation. One, that it violates Article one, Section seven of the Constitution, Virginia Constitution, because it suspends a legislative enactment calling in Senate Bill thirteen oh three without the consent of General Assembly, representative government, and therefore is a violation of the separation of powers. The second is that a violation of Article eight, Section one, which provides for school systems to decide what they can and can't do in their community, is best supervision of that system in the school board. So they're saying, they're challenging Governor Youngkin's executive order two. So as of right now, I check like every hour to see what they're doing with it. Because what could happen with this is that they, the Virginia Supreme Court could issue a stay on the order. If they were to do that, then basically it does not go into effect until they hear the case and kind of work through and the judiciary decides what, how to process the contradiction between Senate Bill thirteen oh three and the executive order. But the problem is we have a start date of January twenty-fourth on an executive order. So that's kind of where we're running into a sort of a legal snag. The key to all of this is we're going to need to work together and understand where we've been. It's going to take the school board administration, teachers and staff, parents to understand that things can change at any moment as challenges may come up and whether or not the executive order is stayed or if it's allowed to go or if it's rescinded or whatever happens. We should consider the current precedents that we've set, but also the possibility that implementation date may be delayed. And of course, school community health, we are seeing an uptick in cases in the community. They are starting to come down a little and I do have the chart in Virginia. So it looks like we have peaked and are starting to come down. That's great. And this body at the time that we met just a couple of weeks ago, we wanted to hold steady on all of our mitigations and make it through February. Let's get through that and then things are going to look pretty good, right? So really, it's going to come down to the precedent you as a body have set for what you set policy by. And going back to that timeline, you've kind of set a precedent that the bodies follow state executive orders with V D H guidance over C D C and above school board policy as we did in our August thirteenth letter, as we did all of last year when the C D C and V D H weren't aligned. If you remember that, we were picked the closest to home, those executive orders we follow. C D C guidelines, we originally interpreted that all last year and the beginning of this year as being giving flexibility even with Senate Bill thirteen oh three regarding implementation for C D C recommendations. The governor was the person, Governor Northam at the time, reinterpreted that for this body in the state. And that sort of became the prevailing interpretation of that bill. And then a health commissioner's order was what we followed then. So now you have a different person in that same office reinterpreting the bill again. Bill did not change, so it's not an enactment or disenfranchising of that bill, but more a different interpretation of it. So that's something to consider. So my recommendation, looking at all of these things with the precedent and legal precedence, I do say that we stick to what we said we're going to do as a school board with the policy in place. Okay? So your policy of all our safety and health, our health and safety plan stays in place. We believe this is what we need to do. However, right now, as things stand at this point in time, parents who wish to elect for their child not to be subject to this particular policy mandate would have to elect to do that on paper. They don't have to tell us why, by executive order says that. They've kind of backed you into a legal corner at this point right now. So if the board decides to go that way, what I would like to do is issue that statement that our policy isn't changing. I think that's really important to say that it makes a statement that the school board said this. This is what we believe, this is our statement, that we don't change our mitigation. It's still expected. But, you know, if you elect not to be subject to that particular policy, then you as a parent, as of right now, have that right to do that. But I'd like to issue that statement to say very clearly what our position is. And then have a parent decision-making flow chart just to help parents think through all the considerations. I think that's important. So just this little flow chart kind of says, have you been fully vaccinated? Has your child had COVID in the last three months? Yes and no. Is your child immunocompromised or frequently around family members who are at high risk for complications? So it basically walks through all those scenarios. And in almost all cases, it's highly recommended that you, you know, continue to mask for now, at least until the Omicron surge kind of subsides. But there are certain areas where you may be at lower risk to yourself and others when not wearing a mask. So that's just a, just helps to consider. I can't tell you what to do and can't, you know, with, from a perspective of enforcement, but it might help sort of walk through the scenarios where you're at the least risk to yourself and others. There are still times regardless that masks have to be required, school buses are one of them. If the N C I S team identifies you as a close contact of someone who has tested positive and you want to come back on days six through ten of the quarantine period issued by V D H, that's still a guideline that we have to follow. So on days six through ten for in-person learning, you would have to mask for that. If you were exposed or tested positive and wanted to come back day six through ten. Teachers and staff would still be subject to the Department of Labor OSHA standard, emergency standard temporary order. So unfortunately, at this point, that's still, I know I had some staff asking if that is available for children. Is it available for staff? No, it's not. So all staff would need to continue to mask. And as per our health and safety, our health and safety plan, if it were to stay in place, then all spectators and visitors and everybody else coming into school would still have to mask. And we said we wanted to get to March and that would be the policy that would still stand. And I think again, I think it protects you legally from any challenge when you say, no, that is our policy and that's what the executive order says. You can set whatever policy you think is appropriate. However, I don't have the enforcement ability to deny a child in-person instruction for whom their parent elects not to have them subject to the policy. So I'm sorry, it's a lot of convoluted information. It's not, and I can't tell you how, you know, difficult this is to get a curve ball when everyone's on the same page and we're running so well and we're almost there. And then, you know, we have other things to deal with. And I hope we can stay tightly knit together through this. And we'll be through the surge soon. Really quickly, I'll show you just a quick health well check. Virginia's looking pretty decent, already coming down pretty rapidly. So my estimation, three or four weeks, we're going to be pretty much back down to this point. Looking at the other charts from the U K and South Africa, if we're following that same trend, Florida, we'll be there pretty soon. You know, so in Rappahannock, kind of a similar trend, starting to come down, but still plateauing there a little bit. And then our last dashboard, surprisingly pretty good after having that long holiday break. This was Friday's dashboard. And of course, we've been out of school because of weather. Might be a blessing in disguise to let everyone who might have been exposed to kind of stay home, rest. They're not traveling for holidays and things. So I expect the dashboard to pretty much reset like the reboot did. So we don't have much time left. Roma's there with this surge. So that's where I stand, that's your recommendation.
So just to be clear, and to reiterate, right? Your recommendation this evening. First of all, busing, still, any mass transit is still dictated by T S A. Masks are required. And I saw today that that was through March the eighteenth right now so far. And then I see two things that we will distribute. One is a decision matrix.
Yes.
Right? That you showed us to help parents choose wisely. And also a letter. Do we have a letter that we're going to provide that is the exemption, exemption letter?
So the letter would look something like this stating that, and if there's, I think it's important to say that we're keeping our policy in place, our health mitigation. Please use this decision-making metrics, consider it. I can't tell you what to do as the parent, but consider using this when deciding. And then it goes through our normal caveats here about you should continue to monitor a child's health. Here's the symptoms. Please, it comes down to really keeping your child at home when they're sick. That's like the most important thing you can do. People without symptoms don't need to seek care, be tested. This is all in our usual notices that we want people to understand. And then at the end, if after reading all this information, you would like to elect for your children not to be subject to the mask requirements in your child's school or school program. So it puts it back in the hands of the parent so then they can, no reason why. You just have to give me the name and the grade and then of course sign to give us permission to make sure they're on that list. And that's important too, because we may have a parent who's really adamant that wants their child to have the mask and, you know, and want them taking it off in school when they, we're trying to enforce that too. So this is the best I have for you today.
This would be effective at the earliest, January twenty-fourth.
On Monday, not tomorrow, we're coming to school tomorrow, tomorrow, everything is normal.
But starting on Monday, this would be in effect. And so I'm picturing, you know, students hand carrying a letter to an administrator as they get off the bus, right? That's been signed by their parents, that's the scenario we're looking at.
It could be, it could be to their child's teacher, it could be to the office. They, parents can email it, whatever they feel comfortable doing. As long as we have some documentation that on Monday, you know, to be able to wear masks in those school buildings, they'll need this on file to be able to.
To wear a mask or to not wear a mask?
I'm sorry, to elect not to.
Electing. Right, it's a letter, electing exemption, right.
So no letter means mask?
Yes. If you don't have this on file, then it's expected your child would be masked. So that's why it's important to not say just a optional kind of, that's not what we have. We have what we are sticking to, what we said we want to do through March and look at the data and then we can start de-escalating other mitigations. All other mitigations are staying in place and amped up a little during the surge. So our cleaning, our distancing, our plexiglass, our changing of filtration, all of those things are still going to be in place. We're not changing any of that cohorting, still lunch in the classrooms until we get through this next period of time. But so all that's in place and that's not how we started the year either. We didn't have all of those pieces of the puzzle that are also very important, so.
And the situation, just to be clear, the situation with adults like at sporting events or teachers or, that's not affected by this executive order at all. So it's status quo expectation for that. I would also, I thank you for your analysis and the hat that you put on because I've been watching some of our neighbors and I think that they, they're inheriting risk, great risk for some districts. And so I see this as the best way to implement something that's the most reasonable given the parameters. So I appreciate that.
All subject to change at a moment's notice, so please slightly look at that, that's what I have.
Although, so since you said that, subject to change at a moment's notice. So let's say that there's a change, right? And will we, the board, need to reassemble to change that on a moment's notice?
No, that's why it's really nice that you keep your policy the way it is because that's the policy. So if that simple piece of the procedure of that policy changes, then it would just go back. It would revert back to what it was.
And in that case, yeah, that goes back to where it was. But if it's additional, I mean, the policy also handles de-escalation. So it could continue to improve without another meeting for us to decide something.
It could. And we said initially, we're just going to hold the line through February and then March decide on any of that. So I don't anticipate, but we don't know what else, you know, might come. We may need a special call meeting for another order that we have to look at or what comes out of the health office or video. I'm not sure, I can't promise that, but as soon as I know, you know what we have.
Do you have the current community spread data?
The which one? The community spread?
Community spread data.
Right. So that on the well check, the, you mean the map? This one?
No, I meant the.
The map with the.
The Rappahannock Rapidan community spread data.
We're all still in the red.
Yeah.
High transmission. High transmission, we're still all in the red, all on.
Yeah, all red.
All red, yeah.
So I guess I'm confused. I'm not sure why we need to make any changes at all in the policy that's been really successful, where we make our decisions based on the community spread. I have a hard time going away from success. You see what I'm saying?
Well, yeah, and that's why I'm recommending you don't change your policy at all. As a school board, you stand on your policy and stand firm with it.
But we're adding this, this parent opt-out thing.
No, well, it's not.
We have to.
Oh, no, that's not, I don't, I don't consider that to be gospel.
Well, it's an executive order.
Well, there's a law that contradicts that too.
It doesn't contradict it, it's not clear.
We'll have to see what the Supreme Court says.
Well, but until then, until then, this is the law.
No, not necessarily.
This is our.
Both are in effect now, I mean, F B thirteen oh three is.
To the maximum extent practicable, which was.
We have, we have.
Is it not practicable?
We can practice it.
It's practicable, we've been doing it for six months.
This is practicable too. Otherwise, we wouldn't be sitting here talking about it. It doesn't, I mean, it's some, somebody other than us will decide whether this is in conflict or not. But for the time being, we have to respond to this.
I, we do have to respond, but I'm not sure.
It's very explicit, there's not, I don't see wiggle room, it's explicit.
If we, just, can I just add one of the really important pieces that I saw in your very, very good presentation? Just the piece about N ninety-five masks is really important. Just when you look at what is effective and what is not effective. And when I think about, I mean, I consistently think that we need to look at the science of what we're doing and whether we're doing a thing that's effective. If we're wearing cloth masks and it's not proven to be effective, and if I have a, am a parent with a child in school who has been following the science during the pandemic, I would really want, I would send my child to school in a N ninety-five mask and I would hope that if I was not of the means to have N ninety-five masks, that part of what I could be owed by my school district would be to have that best P P E and we provided the mask like the cloth masks. I think that I'd be much more amenable to continuing on this path and allowing for exceptions if we're also providing what we know is, is the most effective filtration for students as well as staff. I know we provide them for staff currently, anybody who asks for them.
Yes.
It's, I agree, Mr. Mills, that it's hard because, you know, people are going to want to have an exception and they have legs to stand on, on that. I just practically, how is this going to unfold? We don't want to have more kids be sick, like that's the main piece. And we don't want more, so I would really love it if we could include in the, in the, in the, the letter that you drafted, that N ninety-five masks are recommended. And we also, we know that we can, you know, order, I ordered, you know, the post office. I don't know exactly when the post office is going to. when the post office is gonna get our family's mask to us.
And test, yeah.
But, 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 you know, but there's, and there's probably masks for kids coming up pretty soon. I just, I just would like to see that we're going, that we're doing the best we can.
So, and I agree.
Within parameters of both laws.
I would say.
And I'm not arguing, I'm just saying.
No, I would say the N95 is definitely a true statement.
Yeah.
Because basically, what I've, over the past couple of weeks, I'm thinking a cloth mask is a declaration.
And, and that's what has been said by public health experts.
And if it's a declaration, then we're just fooling ourselves, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But then I would say this, I've been wearing this K95 all day, and it's hard.
Yeah.
It's much harder to breathe through than the cloth mask I've been wearing for the last, whatever, months. And, and so I'm picturing a child who was wearing a cloth mask most of the time, ineffectively, trying to wear one of these, and I'm not sure if it's making things worse for them or.
You take a middle, take a middle road and use a surgical mask, and that's a middle road from that perspective.
Yeah, we can offer something better than a cloth mask.
Maybe, yeah, something better than a cloth mask.
Yeah, yeah.
Is what that we could possibly.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it would be good, good to see. They are not easy.
Especially now that the CDC just changed this, so they're gonna be harder, but we have anticipated that and are working on ordering.
Right.
And hopefully, we'll have some for parents who request, that want to have them.
But I would agree. That's a good, it's a good sentence to add to.
And the other piece.
So what are we gonna say about visitors?
They're following our policy.
It stays the same thing, yeah.
They're required to wear masks.
They're not.
We're not gonna have 50 people come to a basketball game without masks.
They, they have to wear a mask when they come to our school.
They haven't.
We can't.
I know, I agree. I've seen that, and that's.
Well, we don't have the authority to enforce that.
I mean?
We don't, we don't have the authority to enforce it.
We don't have.
We can, yeah.
We're doing, and, I mean, we do the best we can.
We didn't have the authority before.
I know our athletic director does speak up to people and things, so.
And we, and we did.
Yeah. Enforcement's another thing, and then VDH does have a statement in there about enforcement, that they're not really gonna help with that, but it's our policy, so we can say something about it, and we have been doing that at least. And I, I think for the most part, our, our fans have been doing a good job. We had some visitors from other schools that we've had to speak to as well, but, you know, we do the best we can.
The, the other piece, in terms of just thinking how it works out for parents of young kids, too, like, I'm just wondering, are, are we, can, I, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to think of it from the perspective of a variety of parents of what we're doing.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, under our policy, we're currently offering remote learning for anybody who requests it.
Mm-hmm.
And there also are areas of some classrooms in the elementary school where, where students can elect, or parents can elect to have their students be near folks who are masked, and.
Yes, and that, they were pretty good about that, speaking up when we started the year and said, can you, and, and the teachers have been great about, you know, working with kids to the best of their ability to seat them, using their seating chart to that advantage. And now with pods, it's a little bit easier, too, but depends on, on the makeup of the classroom and how many.
And, and at no time should any staff encourage a child to take his or her mask off?
No, not, not unless the.
Unless they're outdoors.
Outside, having a mask spray.
Having a mask spray.
Yeah.
Or, so, that's, that's, that should be uniform.
At this point, it's appropriate. At this point, it's not right, yeah.
For everyone.
Right. Correct.
I still don't see why we're moving away from, from some science that has worked. I just, I can't get that.
We're not.
Sorry?
Well, I think we are. If we're offering, if we're offering an opt-out, that's exactly what we had in August. We had an opt-out, and, and that was with a variant that was maybe a 10% of the ability to transfer that this one is. And we can see that in, in the numbers. That's pretty simple.
We have, here's a sentence from the, here's a sentence from the executive order.
I wrote it a hundred times.
CDC recommends masks. Its research has found no statistically significant link between mandatory masking of students and reduced transmission of COVID-19. That's CDC's.
Mr. Mills, I don't know if you, like, do we have our graph of all of the data that we have for the year? Because on our, on our COVID data chart, we see that big spike that we saw at the beginning of the year, where we had many, we started with one case and it snowballed exponentially with the Delta there variant. We have local data that shows that, that the only difference between those two sets is no masks and a spike in, in incidence of, incidence of COVID, and then we have a lower bar that we set because the only difference between those two was no masks required and masks required.
I think there were others.
That, that, that phrasing is not accurate. I mean, it's just not.
There are other mitigation strategies that we implemented at the same time.
There were.
It wasn't just masks.
Air filtration, the cleaning.
We, we got the air filtration in the previous school year.
CDC has said, these things are, what, 15 minutes?
We, we got.
And, and this is what made the big difference. It, it can't be.
That's why we need to call for N95 masks and be.
But we didn't have N95 mask all year long.
So.
And here we are. These things either did or didn't make a difference, apparently they didn't.
They made some difference.
I'm sure they did. For 15 minutes, according to the CDC.
Combined with.
We're in class for 90 minutes. Surgical masks are good for an hour. We're in class for 90 minutes.
I, I can tell you, it's my intention, we're gonna have a motion tonight about what we're gonna be doing with this. My intention is to be voting in favor of the superintendent's recommendation, adding in a sentence that speaks to the school providing a, a better surgical quality mask for a student if they need one. So that's where I'm headed this evening, just so you know. I don't know if everyone else is willing to.
Continuing, and we're looking at the numbers, right? And when the numbers decline, then we can.
Mm-hmm.
But now we mask until.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unless a parent elects for their child to be subject, that's the executive.
Wait, wait, say that again, please.
So the, my recommendation is that you don't change your health and safety plan and your, your policy at all. You, as a board, you stand firm in your, what you've said is that we're gonna hold the line until we get through February, look at the data in March, and then decide how to de-escalate everything. Now, that's still in place. Your policy doesn't change for everything. However, we just now have this one new legal piece that says that parents who elect for their child not to be subject to that policy have the right to send their child to school. And I can't, right now legally, I don't have any other way to enforce that, so.
Are we, are we sure that's a legal piece?
Right now. It'll be challenged. It's being challenged, but right now I have an effective implementation date of January 24th by executive order. I don't, you know, as a superintendent, I don't have much else I can go on. I don't have a new commissioner's order. I don't have an attorney general opinion. I don't have all these other pieces that I was really hoping would happen before tonight. And they may come over the weekend and change some things, so.
There is some, there is some difference of opinion as to whether the law precedes or overrules the executive order.
Mm-hmm.
Do we, have we, we have no way of knowing that except for what the law says.
Right, and the precedent that you've set as a board to follow the closest to home executive orders in the state of Virginia, so that's what.
Say it again, please.
So the, the precedent that, as a board, as a body, that you've set is to follow executive orders that have come, issued from the state, even after this Senate Bill 1303 was reinterpreted. So that's where your own precedent of setting policy was set. So that's kinda where we're, kinda stuck, and it could change. Like I said, there could be a stay on the order this weekend that says, hold on, Supreme Court's gonna hear the case, it's not effective yet, in which case, this would not be effective. But the moment that that is, and there could be challenges where the judiciary changes it, but as of right now, this moment, this is all we have right now. And that's my recommendation. I mean, you could decide what you would like to do with it, but.
So it, it does get confusing in terms of on the ground. I mean, a lot of, a lot of what education is based on and running a school effectively is based on is consistency. And although you can make an argument that changing what it looks like in school is consistent, another, I mean, a child in class will not see that as being consistent, and it'll be a, a varied set of rules. It'll be, well, I come from this family, and so I have this rule, and I come from that family, and I have that rule, and it subjugates the school board's being here at all to do anything to run the school. I mean, it, I mean, it, it doesn't, and it does not honor that we've learned things this year. You know, we've learned that it, that it works. I mean, we've been able to keep school going. So I, so I can understand that, I, I would, I'd like, I'd like us to discuss and think a little bit more about what would be the most consistent thing. Consistent with what we've done around executive orders is one thing, but we also have, like, the day-to-day of our school, and since our soft, since our, since our second opening, what it's looked like in school is that everybody wears a mask, pretty much. The only, the, the new, the new information that we have now is that we know that the cloth masks that many of us have been wearing aren't as effective. That's the new piece of information that I saw from, the, the legal stuff, I don't care as much about is like, be keeping it, keeping consistent in school.
I think, I think we're going, we're going away from the science, and that bothers me a, a great deal.
And from pedagogy, just.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this real quick, don't mind. The Virginia Chapter of America Academy of Pediatrics released a statement today saying, strongly recommends children continue to wear masks in school while COVID-19 infection rates remain high. Virginia pediatricians make the strong recommendation that children wear well-fitted masks regarding vaccination rates, all based on the science. Has nothing to do with executive orders or the law. It's based on what we have found to be beneficial for kids. My whole goal is to keep kids in school. That's, that's the whole deal. If we can, if we can figure out a way to say to a kid that's masked and comes in, in close contact with somebody that comes in positive, that they can test and come to school and test and come to school, that would be wonderful. Be the best way to go. But if we have 20% of our kids not wearing a mask and possibly infecting 20 other percent of the kids, we're, we're still in the ballgame. It's, it's not, it makes no common sense to me, I guess. I mean, it's, it is what it is.
The timing is not ideal.
Pardon?
Timing is not ideal on this.
No, it, it's a long way from ideal. I think what we've had has been ideal. We make a decision based on the community spread. Right now, you said, the whole thing is red, just red as it can be. And so we would not make another decision until February, and then we would look at it again and make a decision. But let's say we, we go this route, and 50% of the parents don't have their kids wear a mask.
Could happen.
And we have a, we have an outbreak. What are you gonna do?
We follow the VDH guidelines of what we do.
We'll have to close school.
We may.
Yeah, that makes no sense.
And at the beginning of the school year, I mean, the concern around our, I mean, I'm, I'm not talking about legal liability, but around our feeling of liability if we know that we have high community spread. We've heard, we've had two consecutive school board meetings where we've had a lot of data that suggests that we should keep the physical presence in school exactly the same as it has been, because it's doing the best possible job at keeping spread from happening in our school and in our broader community. These people go home. You know, keeping people in school, in a safer school environment, is what we'd like to have happen. I mean, we know, I, I, I mean, you're, you're fond of saying what Richmond says, it's just a piece of paper. I feel like it's just a piece of paper, and we have lives and people that we're in charge of protecting. And, and I don't, I don't, I can, I can see a legal argument saying that we, we're choosing to, to honor Code 1303 because it's not unlikely, given the scenarios that we have just had outlined, it's not unlikely that we, that this executive order will be rendered, you know, not, not possible to, to execute. It's pos, that, that is a possibility.
Possibility.
And, and, and in terms of consistency as a body, as a school board, as a, what it's like day-to-day at school, it, maybe next week, it'll be, it'll be struck down, and then we'll have a little week where a few people don't have their masks, and that could cause an outbreak. We have reason to believe that that could cause an outbreak. We, we have data that shows that having people unmasked did cause an outbreak at our school at the beginning of this school year. So, so I'd like to understand, backing away from legal consistency, how can we be consistent? How can we be consistent for our students?
We have the signature waiver parents must sign for their children not to wear masks, correct?
Mm-hmm.
That would cover liability to the extent if your child caught, if you elected not to.
The thing is.
We also cannot, let me, I'll wait a second. The outbreak beginning of school happened so rapidly and so fast, it is impractical to believe that that initiated in school. Those kids came to school with it, more than likely. Dr. Green was here. He alluded to the mask. He's now on board, from what I can read, that these masks are ineffective. These are the masks we've worn all year long. And according to CDC, you've got 30 minutes, and it's not effective. We're gonna go to surgical mask. It's not effective for more than an hour, according to the CDC, the science. We're fighting off in the weeds. Last year, we were debating on 1303. We wanted Northam, Governor Northam, to come out and make a statement. He did. We still kinda were unsure. We made our policy. We voted on our policy, and then what VDH came out and said, this is what it means. This year, the same scenario's played out. Now we don't agree this way. Consistency would be, this is our policy. This is what we're gonna do. This is where we're gonna go. The overwhelming majority of parents are good people who know what is best for their children. You don't want me, and I don't, I don't mean to me personally, I'm just an example, to tell you that your kid can't wear a mask in school. I have parents in my district who don't want you to tell them that their kid must wear a mask in school. Parental right is something that is integral to any family, any community. And if these are not stopping per the science anyway, why are we fighting over these? We've had success with the filtration, with the distancing, with the plexiglass, with all the things that we've done. Everything that we've done structurally is in his executive order. We've set the path with what, with our mitigation strategy. The only difference is this, but we still can, you'd have cases throughout the school year with this. And now the science says this isn't effective, and we're gonna go to a surgical mask, like I said, like Larry's got on, and you've got one hour per the science that it's effective, and we're in class for 90 minutes. We're not really saving anything, except our own patients and causing division, fighting back and forth over this. Either we, either we follow the, we follow him this time, or then we shouldn't have followed Governor Northam last time.
But we're in a different part of the pandemic now than we were in August. It was Delta that was just starting. Omicron has only been here for three weeks.
And everything so far through the science and data is much less.
Do you remember the, do you remember the, the graph that we had with exponential growth and and do you understand, I mean, Mr. Grove?
We have taken people to hospital and had to sit and wait for an hour and 15 minutes to get in.
Emergency rooms are full because of Omicron.
Cases, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and, and it's because it's so much more transmissible, even if it's overall less of a, of a virulent disease.
Deadly disease.
Of a deadly disease, we still are having a higher, higher numbers of people in the hospital because more people are getting it if there's not mitigation. That's, that's why it's a change because this mask is better against Omicron, whereas, I mean, a cloth mask was deemed to be fine against Delta, which is where we were in August.
I think that's what the data shows.
All right. Is there any other discussion about where we stand with this?
To me, we follow Northam. Now we have another governor. We have masks, we're looking at the numbers.
Did you put your microphone down?
Yes. Come here, Mr. Grove.
Thank you.
We followed Northam and we mandated masks. Now we have an executive order that says it should be a choice. I personally think everybody should stay masked. I agree, these probably aren't the best, but it's a little hard to get the hospital and, and 95. If we can provide them, that would be wonderful. But to me, the logical thing to do is keep the mask on unless you opt out. And hopefully, we won't have half the population opting out. It's the protection legally and we're following in the consistent way. And that we would highly recommend everybody stay masked unless you opt out. Follow the numbers.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mar. All right, we need to open the floor. We have item of public comment on the agenda. If there's someone I'd like to address the board this evening, can you hear me okay? Out there? Yes. If anybody would like to address the board this evening, if you could rise and come to the podium, if you'd state your name and your district, I appreciate that. And we'll give you, if you could take three minutes and summarize your comments, we appreciate it. And it could be related to budget, if you want to talk about the budget, you know, that might be an uplifting thing at this point. No? Okay.
Totally agree with that statement.
And I will look at Zoom in a moment. We'll give people in here first and then Zoom. If you would like to speak, you can raise your hand, but I'll let, people are approaching the podium first here and then we'll open it up.
Also, just so you're aware, it looked to me like there was 30 people online.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two people. And we have, what, 15 here maybe? So if, if you could please try to keep your comments to three minutes, we might get home at a decent time. Go ahead, please.
All right, can, you can hear me right with the song?
Yes.
Okay. Can you pull up the ma- mask? Little diagram that you had there? I just have a couple of questions.
Name and.
Oh, sorry, Beth Gainer in Stonewall. A couple of questions. So yes, you guys can provide maybe N95, maybe surgical masks. But unless you mandate that the kids have to wear those kinds, you're gonna have a lot of students still wearing these or still wearing those ones right there, which wearing nothing is 15 minutes, both kids wearing cloth masks is 27. And again, you're in there for an hour and a half. So I'm not seeing a huge difference unless it's mandated by you guys to wear N95 or surgical masks. That there will be much of a difference between the children, the parents having a say and opting out or just wearing these masks like we were before. So there's not a huge difference in that unless everybody is wearing them. So you'll have that one hour if all the kids are wearing surgical masks. But what is the chance, unless you mandate it, that that's gonna happen? The kids are gonna wear what they have been wearing if their parents make them wear them. And you are gonna have to provide these every day. These are not washable ones. They go home, they get thrown away and you have to provide another one. So I don't know what the costs are gonna be for the school to provide surgical ones. But they're not easy to find and they're getting harder and what happens when we run out and we've told them that we're gonna provide them one every day and they come to school and there aren't any? The other question I have is for people coming to visit. Are you gonna mandate that the people who come to visit put on surgical masks or the N95 masks that you provide? Otherwise, they're gonna be wearing these masks that they have been for the last two years and they're gonna have 15 to 27 minutes of protection. So they're in with classrooms, they're in the auditorium together and they're pretty much the same as not wearing a mask. You have the people in the gym for a game and they're all wearing these masks and they're all shouting and yelling. You probably have less than 15 minutes, even with them wearing the masks. So I think on that standpoint, it's kind of a mute point unless you make some kind of mandate that everybody who walks through that gym puts on a surgical mask. Everybody who walks through that gym puts on an N95 mask. If you don't, then why are you fighting it?
Thank you. Who'll be next?
So I'm Steve Wodden from Amos Hill.
Jackson?
Jackson, this is.
Loving, loving.
Can I have my mask off while I talk?
Sure.
I'd really appreciate if y'all would take your mask off because it's horrible to tell who's talking sitting back there.
I know.
So I just have a couple of questions. One is if the school board votes not to implement this and I send my child to school on Monday with no mask, what's gonna be the repercussions for him and my family? The N95 mask, I'm in public safety, they work there the best. They have to be fit tested for every individual. It's a 30 to 40 minute process. Are we doing that for the kids every day? Just something to think about. We talked about masks, there's five different masks on this stage that I'm looking at right now. Nobody's wearing the same mask. The cloth mask, yes, they're, in my opinion, they're worthless. If you're not wearing an N95 mask and it's not properly fitted to your face, it's worthless. Just the hardship of, I, I could only imagine sitting in class, trying to see the teacher talk or listen to other kids talk and not be able to see their lips move. The damage that it's doing to our kids by not letting them take these masks off and see the faces of the people is gonna come back to haunt us in the years to come. We talked about the numbers, there's more masks being worn today than probably ever before. And what are the numbers doing? They're still going up, so the masks clearly are not effective. We talk about different rules for different family members and some kids might not have to wear a mask. Well, some kids aren't allowed to date to certain ages. Some kids have to wear different clothes than other kids. That's life. If you think that the N95 is, or that the mask is the true solution to this, then as a parent, you can have your kid wear it. If you don't, your kid doesn't want to wear it, they should not have to wear their mask. And, and lastly, you know, I have two kids in the school. They hang out with other kids out of school and guess what? They don't wear masks. I go over to their houses and associate with their parents, we don't wear masks when we're together. That's our choice. It should be their choice when they come here. They're not, you know, i- if you think they're gonna get sick, they can get sick and bring it there just as easily. You're not controlling them out of school as far as the mask goes. That's all I'd like to say. Like I said, I just, the main thing I want to know is if we sent, if, if the board votes not to implement this and the kids come to school Monday without a mask.
What are we gonna do?
What, what's gonna happen to my child? And I would like that answered tonight, if possible. Thank you.
Who'll be next?
Gary H. Hampton, I'll try to make this quick, but there's a number of items. One, after-school enrichment program will be affected by your decision tonight. Maybe not your decision as much as the governor's decision or the Supreme Court's decision. But there are other programs that follow your lead and, and if we're in your facility, we follow your rules. But the Board of the Headwaters Foundation has voted in his own record of being fully masked as much as possible by everyone that contacts any child that's in the after-school program. We will probably have to amend that based on the executive order. We've been out for a while, so it hasn't been as quite as, but I would ask that the superintendent be in touch with the Headwaters Executive Director, whatever you decide tonight, so we can be compliant with that. And I would, as Chair, my guess is we will do whatever you tell us to do. So if it's everyone's mask and we disregard the governor's order, you're in your building and if that's your policy, we'll follow it. If, if you decide to do what the superintendent recommends, which I would endorse, then we will do what your policy is. But we will then do the same thing. We'll ask parents to write a signed statement exempting their child in the after-school program from masking. Even though they'll still be masked on the buses, I don't know what they wear on the bus, what mask. This whole question about what is effective is driving us all nuts. Very briefly, I would say there's a reason there's a Supreme Court of Virginia and that's to decide the issues that are in front of us. And, and you're not the Supreme Court of Virginia. I would give it a week or two. If you decide to be defiant and, and disregard a governor's executive order, you know, power of the people, but I, as a citizen of Raffanah, would wish you wouldn't do that. We obey orders. We teach our children to be law-abiding. This is an example of civics. There's a division of authority. If the legislature and the governor's office can't agree, it goes to the Supreme Court of Virginia. They will decide and we'll all abide by their decide, decision, or we're lawless. Sometimes you have to be lawless. I'm old enough to remember when we, we marched. But be just very clear, you can't just say it's a piece of paper. If a governor issues an order for the citizens of Virginia, until court tells him he's exceeded his authority, that's the law. So just on that. Moving on to your taxes and your, your budget, just a different issue. I want to reiterate what the chairman said. I cringe every time everyone else around us gets a 5% raise for their teachers because we fall further behind, even if we can come up with the money to pay 80, 90% of our teachers' raises. 5% of $10 is a bigger number than 5% of $8. And since we always start at the bottom of the pile. Every time every other district around us gets a pay raise, it makes our lift heavier just to stay even with them. And that's something that as citizens and parents, we just have to accept. That's, that's a given now. We've done everything we can to look at the LCI. There's not much we can do about that. The ADM was our best hope. If you decide tonight not to give parents choice after the governor mandates that parents have choice, I have to believe that that will adversely affect our, our daily numbers. And come March, those are real dollars we will lose. So as you, I know you've got a head full of stuff and I'm with you guys who want to do science. I like the facts. But on this issue, the ADM is so important that if we lose another 20, 30, 50, 100 kids, and I think that's what you could be looking at if you say despite the governor's order, we're gonna mandate masks. Parent choice has a number of ways of playing out and that would be one of them. Finally, on the academies. I endorse everything that the superintendent says, everything the chairman has said. And, and as Headwaters, I can tell you, our best opportunity to raise independent dollars to support the school system around those kinds of programs that individual donors are attracted to. So, so the fine arts, we might be able to help you with that. I know we can help you with the agricultural academy. The health one, we haven't quite, we don't have many doctors in this community. We don't have a lot of health professionals, but we do have people who really care about health and wellness. So I think on those three initiatives, we probably have a better chance of raising independent philanthropic dollars from both inside the county and outside the county. So as you consider your budget, they might look like extras, but they may be the extras where we can actually get some traction for private giving. I don't envy you your, your jobs. I thank you for your service and God bless you all.
Who'll be next?
Evening. Brian Vollmerich, Wakefield District. Thank you all for being here as a school board in these challenging times. I don't, phew, that's a big weight. Real quick, just trying to change up some things. Larry, your comment about comping, making a pass for parents to attend the basketball games, that idea or football games or in general, that idea might actually generate more revenue. I know from cooking for 26 years, when you don't, in restaurants, when you mess somebody's meal up, you don't give them a free dessert, you don't give them a free appetizer, you give them a meal ticket to come back to your restaurant because not many people come to dine by themselves. They're always bringing somebody with them. You may actually encourage people to come to games because not many people are gonna come by themselves. But that little coupon to say, come back in our doors, would be very, would be very helpful, I think. Coming from a culinary standpoint. Nothing's 100% mask masking, that was the light part. Nothing is 100%. We're, we're clear on that. Everyone can agree, nothing is the perfect solution. So it comes to mitigation. So where, where do we set our mitigating standards? And I, I just agree that we should wait until, I'm not agree, but I, I think we should wait until, you know, the, the other law, it's 1303 law, see how that all plays out. Your parental right ends at the rights of my children. So that's something else to consider. I don't like masks. Northam wasn't a scientist, neither is Yonkin. Yonkin playing to his constituents that got him in the office in place where he was. That was one of his things, I'm gonna get rid of masks, I'm gonna do this. He's playing to his voters. And we shouldn't play to politics when it comes to the safety and health of our children. Regardless, 20 minutes, an hour, 90 minutes, N95, cloth, it's still helping. Oh, life, liberty, the pursuit of happiness, ineligible rights by the Declaration of Independence guaranteed to all government has created to protect your personal liberty and your personal security. And that comes down to rights where your rights end infracting upon my rights. Support a parent's choice and not have their children masked. If the parents would also be willing to sign a waiver that they're willing to volunteer to come in and help when there's another outbreak for any teachers or any staff who are out or anything based on an outbreak, they can fill out the form on the bottom saying that they're willing to come in and help as long as they're willing to have their choice to have their child maskless. And I agree, like we, we don't mask when friends come over. And, and there are, there's some, it comes down to mitigation again. And I, I feel we should be responding, not reacting. Unfortunately, most times there's a new Omicron, Delta, there's a new variant, it's already here by the time we're doing something about it. And end around, is there a way to change the school dress code? As you guys have control of that enough to be able to say, a mask is part of your dress code. Regardless of what state, federal, just as a community. We know what happened back before. It was, I mean, I pulled my, I quit my job and pulled my kids out of school because there were so many cases of Corona, of our COVID. And then finally, opportunity. You have the opportunity to protect the children and people in your community, I, I think it's a no-brainer. I hate these things. I'd love to hear, hear teachers, my kids talk about their teachers and not having anything to have to do with this. And you guys talk about other stuff, but unfortunately, it's like the way, where we, where we're in and, and to say like, let's, and I appreciate everything you guys do. And I, I think that's, I think that's all I really had, but, um, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Who'll be next? Yes, yes. If anybody that's speaking to us, please, if you want to unmask so you can speak, it helps a lot.
Okay, thank you. Oh, wow, all right. Much better. I'm in the Stonewall District, Mr. Grove. I'm Rosanna Reed and as I told Mr. Grove when I came in today, I'm in total agreement with the, the governor's executive order. Throughout COVID, I think everyone has done a great job of following all the governors and state rules, whatever we had to do, we've complied. I take this as something we should comply with. I'm in full agreement that it should be my right as a parent. And it's noted, there's six specific statements and the number six talks about what the school district is supposed to do. Not what I'm supposed to do. I see what I'm supposed to do and what my choices are. But it talks about what the school districts are supposed to do to improve things. And no one has talked about that in the budget that you all were discussing about improving the indoor air quality and various other suggestions. That's just something I noticed. Now, I could be wrong if I just didn't hear it, but anyway, I'm in agreement and I told Mr. Grove that. And I'm a, a parent and I think that it's my right and not Mr. Grove's right, actually, to decide what's best for my child. I certainly do respect everyone that works on the school board. But I am in agreement with this, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone online? Dr. Ginsley?
I have some raised hands, so I'm gonna go with this yellow H. It says Heather HNF. I'm gonna ask you to unmute and you can give your public comment. And please state your name, your full name and district.
Hi, I'm Heather Farmer, I'm Jackson District. Can you, does he hear me okay?
Hold on one second, let's see if I can get this up a little bit. Yeah, Jackson District, go ahead.
Okay, Heather Farmer, can you hear me okay?
Much better, yep.
Okay, good. I haven't heard a lot of conversation about quarantine and quarantine guidelines in regards to masking. So I don't know if I'm allowed to ask a question, but the first thing is, are we still under the same quarantine guidelines that we have to follow as we were at the beginning of the school year?
So public comment usually isn't interactive, but we're gonna take your, we will take your, we'll take your question down low and answer it at the end.
That's what it's in regards to because to the most of my knowledge, we're still under those same guidelines. And my biggest concern is keeping my kid in school. I want her in school from not being sick and in school from not being quarantined. So just to have a conversation and those options out there, because I know there's a lot of families that don't understand how masking relates to their kids being in or out of school when they are exposed to another child or when they're exposing another child to their unmasked kid. So I would love to see that information put out to give people more options and some more understanding on what it means to send your kid to school unmasked under the guidelines we have to follow for quarantine. And also, there's no information now that I would also like to know, can't ask question, but would like to see this information put out with this letter or whatever information we're putting out. There are vaccinated kids now that we have a vaccine available for all schools. Are vaccinated kids, now that we have a vaccine available for all school-aged kids, are they required to quarantine if they're not showing symptoms? So again, just to make sure all the parents have all the information on what it means when they're taking the masks off, what it means when they're getting their kids vaccinated, and how that relates to their kids getting to stay in school and also how it relates to them helping their fellow students and their friends and their teachers and everyone else stay in school in regards to the quarantine guidelines that we have to follow. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer.
And we'll take any questions that you have during public comment and definitely address them in the discussion. Great questions.
And it seemed like, uh, before we move on, it seemed like, you know, it is a, it is a good idea for this letter to be very informative and include, and especially the updates that we've made recently and what the impacts are of addition decisions on quarantining. So it's a very, very good point.
Next, I have Sarah Haynes. I will ask you to unmute and you can move forward with your comments.
Thank you. Sarah Haynes of Piedmont, um, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Thank you. I would suggest that you should stay with the masking to the greatest extent possible. I think if we're defying someone, then it's defying the governor or defying the legislature. And you really need to think about keeping kids in school, doing the best thing you can to keep them safe. I think that the school board is more, um, able to make decisions than all individual parents. The school board is charged with thinking about all parents and all students and doing what will best promote their health. They have to be more informed, um, come to meetings regularly, not just if there's something that is politically charged. And so my recommendation is the school board should decide, but, um, I personally would certainly stick with the strongest masking possible, not only to protect students and their parents, but the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you. Who'll be next? Another hand? Are you all in the, in the audience, are you able to hear, uh, these people when they're talking? Good.
There's anyone else on Zoom that would like to address the board? Please raise your hand. I see none.
All right, thank you. Anyone else, uh, this evening? No? Public comment closed. And, uh, as we move on, uh, the next thing on the agenda is a update to our mask policy. So at this time, uh, I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, adopt in accordance with the superintendent's recommendation as made this evening. Uh, and, and to modify that outgoing letter to discuss the offering of masks that Ms. Bynum mentioned and any updates that we might have to the quarantine, uh, guidelines as they stand today, because we recently did change that. And that would be my motion. In accordance with the superintendent's recommendation this evening, uh, as modified with the offering of masks to any who might need and with, uh, the letter also containing quarantine updates for parents so they can make better decisions. Yep? So that's a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
We have a second for Mr. Uben. Is there any discussion?
Can I add just a clarification for the, uh, quarantines? That's a very important point and I think it really should go in the letter. We're still subject to the quarantine rules that we've been using. Um, so if you remember, distancing and masking does matter. Um, we've been working very closely with our, uh, Department of Health and our public health coordinator that if appropriate, N-ninety-five masks are being worn, um, to that extent, then people don't have to quarantine. If they are, uh, fully up to date on vaccinations or fully vaccinated, they do not have to quarantine. And also, no. And also if they were, um, if they've tested positive and recovered from COVID in the last three months. So those are your three scenarios that quarantine. So that gives parents too, uh, who are opting to wear a ninety-five or send their child, um, N-ninety-fives, they would not have to quarantine should another student that sat next to them and didn't mask, for instance, be quarantined. Um, and we would definitely protect that unless, of course, they develop symptoms and then that's everybody.
All right. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, could we, uh, possibly add to that, that we go back to having temperature checks?
A lot of our folks that are testing positive don't have a fever, so, um, but we do ask that you monitor your child's symptoms, that's part of it. And that's our daily health screening that we do for staff. We expect you to, you know, monitor those symptoms.
I literally had COVID over Christmas for the second time and never had a fever once. And tested positive for it, never had a fever. It's giffy.
Any other discussion? All right, I think since I can't see people's mouths, we should probably just roll call the thing. So that's a motion. I'm sorry.
Before we go, let's just clarify for the record too. So my recommendation is that your policy, our health and safety plan does not change.
Right.
It stays the same. However, parents who elect to have their child not be subject to that masking part of the policy have the right to do so and they will receive a letter and all the information that's pertinent for them to consider before they do that. Um, and then beginning with the implementation as of now on January twenty-fourth, which is Monday.
Right.
So parents for school tomorrow under this are, are gonna be staying with the same mitigation we've had?
Yes.
And then they could, they could fill out the form and elect?
Starting on Monday. So tomorrow, everything is as it's been, nothing changes. The effective date of the order is on Monday, the twenty-fourth.
And busing doesn't change?
No.
Busing has the same requirement regardless? Okay, are you clear?
Yes.
Are you good?
Got it.
And you're good? All right, uh, roll call, Mr. Uben?
Mr. Uben, aye.
Mr. Grove?
Nay.
Nay? Ms. Bynum?
Nay.
Wesley Mills, aye?
Lucy Ann Meyer, aye.
The motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
To move.
We have a motion from Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Uben, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Sort of meeting adjourned, thank you for coming.